Let me know when you're recording and we'll start the meeting. Okay. All right, we're going to call to order the Gladstone City Commission regular meeting for October 12th invocation. I will give the invocation. Lord, thank you for allowing us to join together in peace and freedom in this great country. Keep us mindful of the work we do here that we keep truth, fairness, and all citizens concerned in the decisions we make. Amen. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Thompson.
Excused.
Commissioner Akala.
Here.
Commissioner Hunter.
Here.
Commissioner Mantila.
Here.
Commissioner Stazinski.
Here.
All right. No public hearings. This meeting is a public meeting and we do have public comment tonight. We are open to the public. I do not see anyone here, but I will announce public comment at this time. Is there any?
If we could also, for the record, just note, we did start late.
We did, yes. So for the record, we did start late at approximately 6:25. Due to some technical difficulties in this, recording will be posted at a later date for, even though this meeting is on October 12th.
October 12th, open to the public.
Open to the public. It was posted as such and the public, the doors are open and the public is welcome to join the meeting at any time.
Thank you.
All right, hearing no public comment, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. City Commission Special Meeting minutes of September 28th and payment of bills. Do you have that information in your packet?
The one bill over $5,000 was wastewater plant and they had budgeted this, this new pump for the state police sewage lift station.
Yeah, I remember talking about that and glad to see that work's getting done. Do we have a motion? Motion to accept. Is there a second? Motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. No unfinished business. Moving on to new business. Item A, Ninth Street Project Change Order Number Three.
Okay, this is the change order that we amended the roll for. This is the 1000 block of Minnesota Delta. Only did about half of the alley and so the cost that the contractor had bid it was a savings to the project for a credit of $12,660. If you look at the fiscal effect so far, we had 5% set aside for contingency and we, after change order number two, we had $175,423 and now by getting this credit, we'll we'll have $188,083 left in the contingency fund. So we're doing really, really well for a project this size.
What happens to that? I guess my one question is, is the project complete or nearing completion?
There is still a little bit of paving to do and we're going to have the first final walkthrough on Thursday. So we'll be giving a list to the contractors, stuff that we think needs to be fixed or should be done.
So is it safe to say that we're well ahead of schedule on this?
Over a month, so.
Excellent.
I feel safe to say it.
So, so it would be, it would be a true statement to say that we are ahead of schedule and under budget?
Yes.
I like, I like that. What, what, if there's any remaining after you do the walkthrough and there's no more change orders and if it all, it all pans out here the way it's finishing up with the remaining $188,000, what happens to that money?
That's a good question. I'm not, I'm not sure how that, how that works. So I'll find out though.
Okay.
I just.
It is unusual. Normally there isn't any.
I know. Usually we're talking about, well, we gotta go into the funds from here and there to pay.
I'm glad you guys said, because I was thinking the same thing. I think, where does that go? That's not usual.
No one can remember that ever happening.
Vicky would know the answer to that, but I just assumed if we were going over budget, we would, we'd be dipping into whatever the different funds that, that finance the project.
Right, from each department.
To go back on a percentage basis, I would guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, to each department as according to their percentage payment, possibly. I'm sure there's, I'm sure there's a rule and she knows what that is. I was just wondering if you knew what that was, but we'll, we'll figure that out.
I will have, I'll have the answer to that question for the next commission meeting.
All right, thank you. So we have change order number three for a credit of $12,666. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the change order number three as requested by Coleman Engineering for a credit of 12,660. $12,660.
It's a good news change order. I'll support that motion.
All right, we have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on, new business item B, MERS Temporary Modification to Benefit Provisions.
Well, with the, with the CARES Act that was passed by, by Congress, all our public safety officers got a $1,000 bonus for being first responders and in doing so, we, we, we paid, we've received the money already and we paid it out on a payroll check and MERS all of a sudden was inundated with different communities because of whether or not this is included in your defined benefit final average compensation. And so because we did it through payroll, it would be in the FAC for, and this would be for, for four police officer, three officers and the police chief. The $1,000, if you look at a, I don't know if people are that familiar with MERS, but if you look at a FAC three, which is a three-year average, would roll in out to $333 times the first percentage, assuming they had 32 years. That would be 0.8. So it would be an increase in their pension, annual pension check of $266 if they were here for 32 years.
So this is just basically a filing adjustment for their income?
Because of the way MERS is with their, their programs for each of the groups that has to be put as a temporary modification for, for a one-time increase in salary.
And so we're doing this for four employees?
The four police officers that are defined benefit. And if they don't retire in the next, in the next three years, it really won't, won't affect.
No.
Our, and looking at this group, I would say that's pretty safe that, I know Mike, Mike is the closest and he talks about it every year, but I don't know if he's ever going to retire, so.
Okay, we have that item in front of us. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the MERS temporary modification to benefit provisions and authorize Eric to sign the agreement. I'll support.
We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on, new business item C, City Clerk Contract.
So I went through what we had gone through at the last meeting and corrected the dates and corrected all the section numbers and got rid of the fake section that was never there. And I highlighted all the changes except for the language that Kim had wanted added that was in the supervisor's contract. Because that was pretty much standard language. Other than, I took the permanent employee out. I hope I, I just found one. I went through it three times and I'm, I was sure I had all the permanent employees.
I was looking for that after Commissioner Akala had brought that up.
Changed it.
Where is that? I didn't catch, I didn't catch one in there. Where is that?
Right above the vacation schedule, three, three lines up, it says permanent employees may during the non-FM family leave app maintain. Sorry, I missed that one.
That's easy enough.
I missed it too.
I should have never said that I got all of them.
That's what they make White Oak for.
So I will change that permanent employees to city clerk. And also, and I had changed the, the written request would go to the city commission and it's approved by the city commission because Kim works for the city commission. I'm just her executive secretary.
We've been having fun with that. He makes a great one.
And on page seven, I added the word. On, on page one, I missed, on page one, I added that during emergency or when need be, the city clerk will fulfill her duties while working remotely from home, just because we did use that a lot during this last COVID experience. And existing COVID experience. And on the last page, I added, the city will continue to fund the buyout because that's the way it was worded in our state plan when we bought out all the retirees, the last few people that had, had at one time post-retirement health. And under her retirement, I had moved that back to the 100%, which is the same as all the other employees. I learned a lot about Microsoft Word during this process.
So you have that one change on page six in the one paragraph there. Permanent employees made during the non-FML leave act. FMLA leave, that'll be changed. And what was the other change you said? Page one?
Page six, I changed the permanent employees to city clerk. I say, changed the city manager to city commission.
Okay.
That's who she.
What, the same paragraph?
Yeah.
Yep.
It's in there twice. And on page seven, I just added the word buyout in there just because when I read in the language for what we did with the Public Act 22, was it?
PA 202.
202.
Yep.
Yep, that was, it was listed as, as the buyout, so I thought I'd put that in.
So a couple of changes there. Other than that, are any other?
On page one, where we got that during emergencies or when need be, the city clerk will fulfill her duties while working remotely from home.
Oh, okay.
Should we, should we maybe put that like at the discretion of, I mean, to determine what's, what's an emergency or when need be is? I mean, is that at the discretion of the clerk? Is that at the discretion of the city manager?
You're looking for a little more definition of emergency?
I mean, you know, if Kim says, hey, I got an emergency, working from home this week, is, I mean, is that what we want there language-wise?
Yeah.
Are we talking like a state or federal state of emergency? Is that what you're talking about?
Well, so I'm wondering, do we want to define that better? Do we want to put that like at the discretion of the commission or something, right? So if we're gonna, you know, if there, you know, if a COVID kind of thing is going on and that makes sense, right? But, you know, someone looks at this 10 years from now, like, what am I talking about?
I, you know, as we discussed previously and wanted to bring that up is obviously this was, was new and working from home school shut down, things like that. Obviously, I did work from home in compliance with the, you know, the act or the executive order at the time. You know, so there is that and that would have to occur and if we'd follow state, you know, we'd follow state laws or whatever those parameters were. There was further discussion that I do sometimes flex my time, like if we have budget meetings and I'm here late or elections or whatever, then, you know, and I've already worked 40 some hours, whatever, I may leave early. You know, so there's a difference between the flexing, but yeah.
What if we change it to something like during emergencies on a federal, state, or local level? I mean, if those police, public safety?
I left it as emergencies because they're, like, Kim had a family medical emergency and I told everybody not to contact him, but we, because of the, because of the way her job is, we had to call her during that emergency several times. So that's why I just left it as emergency. So I think if we came up with a discretion of the commission or the mayor or if you want me to be the discretionary, would be better.
The city manager, because I think that would be somebody more on the, on the ground to make that decision when need be than contacting, waiting for us to respond at a meeting or even contacting the mayor.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. For us, it could be two weeks later.
Right. And then say, well.
But at the same time, we should maybe have a check or balance there, kind of, you know, having someone's discretion, I think, probably, probably a good, good idea.
I wouldn't have a problem changing it to.
You know, I don't want, you don't want to make it like a state or.
During emergencies as determined.
I have no problem with that at all. You know what I mean? It's, you know.
During emergencies as determined at the discretion of the city manager? So, are, I mean, if it's a federal emergency, that's a no-brainer.
Right, exactly.
But if it's something more, maybe a little more local or personal, that you can say, okay, you can work from home and we expect you to be available and to continue.
Maybe we should, because, because she doesn't work for Eric, right? She works for us.
Right.
Put that at the discretion of the city manager or the mayor. That way, if there's conflict on that end, right?
Or if the mayor can't be reached?
I could, I could advise the mayor of what's going on.
Say, hey, here's what's going on. Do you want to allow this, to her to be on work status from home?
And then everybody's aware.
I think there's enough language in here that if, I mean, to leave it the way it is, because if she is not her, but maybe somebody 10 years from now, like you pointed out, the city commission can fire that person or have some kind of recourse for them doing something. Sometimes if you have designated people and then five years later, there's a conflict between a city manager and a clerk and there's this going on, then you got all kinds of problems. I think, my personally, just leaving it with emergencies will, will work because.
I think so too, because if we go with a new clerk down the road, I don't mean that word.
Right before this election, sure.
More than likely, we're going to put together a new contract for that clerk anyway. Because I think right now what we're focusing on this contract would be strictly with, with Ms. Berry.
Yep.
Because I don't think with what is the provisions that we're looking at for this updated contract, that a new clerk coming in would probably get those same provisions at the level she's been working at. So I just think the emergencies work out well and then somewhere's down the road. If for some reason there is an employment suppression, then we look at a new clerk and then we have to address a contract for that clerk.
If I could add, I would just want to make, make sure, because we were kind of talking a couple, you know, kind of different things. If, if I need to be on medical or personal leave, you know, and that I'm not available and that I'm not obligated
Right, no, we're not saying that.
Yeah, because, you know, there may be, if I'm in that situation, I maybe can't do both at once. But what, and this was new, like I said, with the whole shutdown, everybody was caught new and stuff. And then the, the idea of, you know, we're the city, we have to come back and we have to do business. But if, for like instance, the schools didn't, didn't open or whatever, you know, I would maybe need some latitude there, which was provided in executive orders at the time, you know, to follow with the law, but as we're seeing, those changed. You know, and, and can be, so that's where Eric and I discussed, maybe should, you know, have that in there. I mean, I, to be available at all times, you know, that I can or work from home. But having just experienced a leave of absence that I needed to have, I would not be able to guarantee on a medical leave or, you know, that I would answer in a timely manner, you know.
And I guess we're getting into so many details that it would be hard to define, so maybe leaving it. As Commissioner Akala said, although I do recognize your, your concerns also, but.
Yeah, you know, the concern, yeah, it wouldn't be, I think, for the personnel we have now. But I know, you know, generally, when you bring someone on.
As Commissioner Hunter said also, that would, there'd be a new contract involved and we change that language.
We'd have to watch that. Because usually you take the, you take the contract, you go.
No, I agree.
And you change the numbers.
And that's one of the things that a future commission and a future clerk will have to work out and you have to watch out for. I know going through several other union contracts, we changed many things that over many contracts weren't changed. And we looked at it and said, well, this isn't appropriate for the times and we need to change it. So it's a responsibility of any future commission to address that.
Agreed.
So, so we do have a contract in front of us with a few change, few verbiage changes, changes necessary. But overall, the main content of it was discussed during the, we had that, it was worked on by, I believe, Mayor, Mayor Thompson?
No, my evaluation.
The evaluation, yes, yes, okay. So we got, we have that in front of, we have that tentative agreement in front of us. With those changes being in mind, do we have a motion to approve the contract with those changes?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a support?
Support.
We have motion and support. It was Commissioner Akala and Commissioners Stazinski.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, moving on. New business, item D, authorize clerk to appoint election inspectors for the November 3rd election. Yay.
Can't wait for Thanksgiving. So this is, it's a requirement to do this for every election. So just, just for the public, we will be having in-person voting. So I need for precincts one and two, we do have an absentee counting board that will be processing both precinct one and precinct two absent voter ballots. For the record as well, to clarify with this early voting that people are hearing, your absentee ballots here for the city of Gladstone are held in the vault until election day. And at 7:00 AM when the polls open, that's when the AV counting board will start. Michigan has made some exceptions for populations or communities that have a population of 25,000 or more to do some pre, pre. We don't fall under that category.
Somebody asked me that question today. Are they counting the ballots already?
No.
I said, I don't think so. I think they're locked away until they get opened on election day.
Yes, yes. So in some communities, if you're a population of 25,000, yes, so it'll be a while before we hit that. But, and then also a receiving board that we are required to use for the end of the night as well. So I have listed the election workers so far. I have had some more interest for some election workers who will be getting trained and then can be used as alternates because they.
Do you have enough?
I have enough, as long as everybody, you know, does show up and so I felt good. I have a couple that are getting trained as alternates that could be used as long as they can go through the training and if everything goes according to plan right now with everyone, I have enough.
If anybody is interested, can they still contact you? When is the deadline to contact you and obtain the training?
Contact me anytime. The, the training is coming up here in the next, there's only going to be two trainings for new workers. So I believe it's like the 21st and 22nd. So if you are interested and want to get trained, like I said, I may not be able to, you know, have a spot for you for November, but certainly in the future. And you need to get the training. It's good for two years. Anywhere in the state of Michigan, you can work on election. And then in two years, you'd need a recertification, which is a little, you know, not four hours of training, so.
So it's four hours initially?
Right now, it's scheduled for four hours initially for the, the two. I usually try and I'm going to as well. There again, the law says that I cannot train election workers until we have a population of 10,000 or more. I don't, they're working on changing that. It's always been proposed, but never gets changed.
Who does it?
Nancy at the county. So, yep, so you'd have to go there. But then I do like to have a meeting with my workers, you know, to set up, especially before this election. There's a lot of things that might be new as far as, you know, just with public and everything. So I'll be having a meeting with them, but that doesn't count as the certification training. So not yet anyway, to be able to do that. Anyway, so we are, if you approve or authorize me to do this, we can have election workers.
I'd make a motion to authorize the city clerk to appoint the necessary election inspectors for the November 3rd election.
Support.
Motion support. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right. City managers report.
We, Rodney and I met with our engineering firm, C2AE, regarding the consent order that we are negotiating. And we had a Zoom meeting on it and then a couple of days later, we had a meeting at the wastewater plant where everybody stood in a circle about six plus feet apart and we talked and the Eagle folks were there and we had a really good discussion on where we're going with that. At the same time, our rotating belt filtration demonstration was going and we got to watch that and see how that was working. That was really interesting. And we also discussed the infiltration and inflow study. Last week, we, we had 18 applicants for the Parkston Director job and we interviewed three of them. And we hope to make a, we'll be making a decision this week on where we're going with that. Executive orders, all this, this is about the. Executive orders, well, this, this is about the Supreme Court decision that got rid of all the executive orders and so there is, the legislature is in, in session trying to, because all the orders were canceled, well, one of them was overriding, not overriding, but making the Freedom of Information Act, or was it?
Open Meetings Act.
Open Meetings Act, sorry. It allowed technology or, you know, the phone calls or the Zoom meetings. In, when, when they, the Supreme Court nullified all the executive orders, they also nullified all the meetings that happened since last March. And so that sort of set out a wave of cities, counties, townships and whatnot, were very agitated that the way it was, we'd have to redo the meetings and that wouldn't be too good. So the legislature is supposed to have a, get that passed through this week. I know it's in rapid progress right now, so. And after the Supreme Court nullified the executive orders, we got a news release from the state police. The Michigan Department of Health and Human Services Director, Robert Gordon, under the Spanish Flu of 1918 rule, did an emergency order, which brought back some of the stuff that was in the executive orders. I just highlighted a few of the things. One of them is the requirement to wear a mask at indoor and outdoor gatherings. The order requires individuals to wear masks when in gatherings defined as any occurrence where persons from multiple households are present in a shared space, in a group of two or more. So just the old rule, this is just like the old rule, except we are, we, we are going to make sure that the people coming in to vote at the polling place, there was a polling place loophole in the old law, but that is now gone. So if you're coming here to vote and you don't have a medical condition, you will be wearing a mask. Another part of the health department order is a limitation on size of gatherings and it's 20 persons per thousand square feet. The chamber here is 1,250 square feet, so we're allowed to have a total of 25 people here at the meeting. So if there is a meeting and you might want to get here a little early or you might get cut off and have to watch through the window. And that was about, that was it, the one, the parts of it that affect the city government. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Eric. Moving on to reports and city commissioner comments. Commissioner Hunter?
Just a couple. There's the, the roads, the Ninth Street project looks outstanding. I was glad to see that it was nearing the end, like we talked about earlier, ahead of schedule, reading through the packet, seeing we got that credit. So, so far, knock on wood, that it's under budget at this point. I don't foresee unless there's something major happens that we're not seeing, it looks like it will come in under budget. So that's, that's great news. So that's, that is good work by everybody involved, from Eric, the staff, to the commission, to Overstar, to Coleman Engineering, all that, all those people involved. It was a big project. It was much needed and I think, I'm getting comments now, it's amazing how you get those negative comments, how everything was so screwed up and one of these roads is going to get fixed and now it's terrible, you guys are going through all the construction. Now it's like, wow, this is really nice. So it's human nature. So I'm glad to see it coming to fruition. The other thing, I, I don't want to jump ahead here, I'm not going to give a name, but I was reading through the, the Parks and Rec minutes and I saw that there was a full-time position, except, was that, that's not the?
No, so that was for the parks and maintenance.
Okay. So that's Robert Brown.
Maintenance and janitorial. The offer has been suspended.
Congratulations, Robert Brown, who's now going to be part of the city staff with the Parks and Rec. So when I saw that, I'm thinking, it didn't really say what it was for, it said full-time position. I'm thinking, well, I didn't want to spoil it because I know Eric was.
No, two different, yeah. Parks and Rec had some activity, yeah, so two openings. So that is for the, the other.
Hasn't officially started yet, so I was thinking about including it, but it's.
Oh, no, that's, no, that's fine. I just, I was right through here and I just saw that. So anyway, welcome aboard. That's, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Akla?
I just want to thank Kim for all of her years of devotion and hard work. Much appreciated.
Thank you. That's it.
Commissioner Stuzinski?
No comment.
Okay. I would just like also to congratulate the staff, the engineering and our citizens for their patience and understanding, working through this project. I drive down Ninth Street now several times a week, just did today and last night again, came downtown to get dinner and it's beautiful. You come in from the south side or the north side town there over by AM 35 and come down, it's a beautiful welcoming entrance. It looks great. It really starts to show what we can do as a small community when we work together. So, and again, I don't want to jump the gun, but looking like we're coming in ahead of schedule and under budget, for anybody who was involved with this or the public that came in and did see some of the scope of the project and where we started with this, what, over about two years ago?
Mm-hmm.
No? It's to see where, how it came together and where it's ending up is fantastic. So I'd like to just thank everybody involved and again, the citizens for their patience and now we have a better drainage system, better water, better firefighting capability, beautiful streets. It's going to get striped, we're going to have a bike path. They seeded already and heck with the weather we've been having, we might even see some grass popping up. But it's, it's, it's going to be a great, great addition and help the citizens and be an asset to the community long after we're gone. So great to see. That's all I have.
You believe that that, that actually, that whole project started from the DDA?
The DDA.
DDA, about the alleys.
Yep.
That was, well, that was at least five years ago.
Right, that was the idea.
The idea that started it.
And when we got to, okay, we're going to bond, yeah. So, great work. Okay, city clerk comments?
I just have, my, my focus has been the election and absentee ballots and those are going strong. We're hitting a record, you know, more than double what we were four years ago. Again, a couple of things, you know, maybe the pandemic, but also that the change proposal three brought, that anybody can get an absentee ballot. There's no reason anymore that you would have to meet for that. So obviously increased numbers there, but, but I've been having a lot of inquiry about, are polls going to be open on election day? So I'm expecting, just, you know, kind of from that interest too, we could have a bit of a turnout there too. So I think it's just going to be a really big, big election and great turnout. And with that said, there's been a lot of questions I'm getting, which I encourage people and voters to call when they have questions. There's a lot of information that's going out there from a lot of different sources and some of it that they're hearing or whatever may not be Michigan law with election law. They do vary from state to state. So I've been getting some calls from some voters and I feel bad. They're, they're worried about something that we don't even do in Michigan or we don't or something they heard and it doesn't quite get relayed quite right. To give me a call, 428-2311, extension seven. If I don't answer, please leave a message, I'll call you back. But I'd rather answer your questions, put them at ease, rather than them worrying with that. But again, if you need absentee ballots, they are still available and will be, and we're just going strong with them and that's been my main focus, so that's it.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Next is closed session to evaluate an attorney opinion. I'd make the motion to enter into closed session to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute as allowable under the Open Meetings Act 267 of 1976, section eight, item H. Roll call, please.
Do I need a second?
I'll support.
Oh, did you?
I'll support, yeah, I'm sorry. Jump in the gun.
Sorry. Commissioner Mantala?
Yes.
Commissioner Stuzinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Akla?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
And Mayor Thompson is absent and excused.
All right, we are now in closed session.